Five thirty, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. All members are present. Our next item of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would recognize Selectman De Souza to lead us. Raise me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the visible looking in justice for all.
Thank you, madam. As noted, all members are present. Because of the short turnaround, I don't think we had, at the time that this was published, we didn't have meeting minutes to approve yet. Public participation, are there any members of the public who would wish to address the board? Seeing them. We have a reappointment of Donna Grant to the Ag Commission for a regular member for a term expiring June sixth, twenty twenty four. Have a motion.
I'll make a motion to appoint Donna Grant to the Agro-Cultural Commission as a regular member for a term expiring June sixth, twenty twenty four.
Selectman Nordell will second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
I'll provide a brief update on South Road Ownership. So Senate Bill one, 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 four was the conveyance, the conveyance bill that included the lifting of the low income restriction on that community. It passed the legislature last night in concurrence at eleven thirty-five PM, which is as close to the end of the night as you want to get. So the next step for that is it goes to the governor's desk for signature, at which point we can then move forward with the municipal component of this, which our planning office is already working on. So that's, that's the update on that. I've shared that with the residents, so they, they are aware the progress has been made. I think that we're coming to a good place here. I think we still have quite a ways to go, but we're coming to a good place. So that's that. Any questions or comments on that?
No, I'm glad they finally approved it last night that late.
Yeah, it was.
I think it's a good thing for the residents for us to move forward.
Yeah. Okay, next is an application submitted by the Director of Community Services for an alcohol waiver at the Summer Concert Series. Melissa's available if we have any questions, but she's gotten all of the signatures that she needs on it, except for mine. So if the board approves it, I'd be happy to sign it and execute it effective this evening.
Marie De Souza will make a motion to accept the application for exemption for alcohol beverages at the East Windsor Park, Pacific Location, the Summer Concert Series, and authorize the first selectman to sign accordingly.
Second?
Selectman Muska will second.
Any discussion?
We didn't advertise tonight's concert as such, did we?
We did not advertise it as such, but it would take effect as such.
Gotcha.
So if you were to bring a growler, you'd be compliant. Any other questions or comments? Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
So carried.
You're muted, Jason.
Thank you, Alan. I appreciate that. So CIP did meet earlier this week. They, they submitted some recommendations to us for dispersal of FY twenty-one, twenty-two CIP funds. They didn't actually have a quorum in that their not all of their members had yet been sworn in, so they were actually one member short because they hadn't taken the oath yet. But regardless, they're advisory to us. We have their, their communication, so we can still take action on it. And that was sent to you via a separate email earlier this afternoon. Any questions or comments on that?
Yeah, Jason, as best I can tell, the one that was sent to us originally, numbers were, were the same for everything. But going on to the new copy that was sent where the recommended budget is, the item number six, Public Works, the GIS system, they upped it by five thousand dollars from the project recommendation. So it's still not gonna the cost of the project, but yet on replacing the three police vehicles, they lowered the one forty-five request to one twenty-five. I would feel more comfortable giving the additional five thousand dollars out of there, make that twenty-five and give the extra twenty-five to the police department so they can replace those three vehicles.
So here, here is how that math worked. On the GIS, the thirty thousand dollars for GIS, they didn't get funded last year, and so they were supposed to be funded at twenty-five last year and twenty-five this year. The, because of where the available funding was, they got twenty-five this year plus that extra five. The replacement schedule is two and a half, for police vehicles is two and a half cars per year, and the quoted price for new cruisers is fifty thousand dollars. So a hundred and twenty-five thousand is two and a half cruisers, which is on pace with the replacement schedule.
Okay, thanks for the clarification.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I was just, you know, as far as the GIS is concerned, I've been kind of tracking that because, you know, it's a big hole in our capabilities that we never seem to be able to fill, but I was happy to see they put a little bit extra money in there, but I would like to, you know, spend some time over the next, you know, rest of the fiscal year, you know, and just know what that thirty thousand represents and, and like, what do we gotta do to get where we need to go? Just gotta, I'd like, I'd just like to kind of review that for everybody's benefit and, and what, what we're getting and what we're missing.
There, there will be an opportunity later in the year, probably late summer, early fall, to revisit some of the capital projects, because as you'll recall, the voters approved paying off debt, including our lease purchases, and the budget as, as we're entering into still contains funding for those lease purchases, which will now be paid off. So to both of your points, if you wanted to address cruisers or additional GIS funding, there will be an opportunity for this board to decide that later on.
Cool.
Amy and I talked about that this morning. We just don't have the numbers quite yet.
Yeah, and I do want to like, I just, I need my memory refreshed, I think, exactly, you know, the steps that we're trying to get to. And it's probably beneficial for everybody.
On the GIS, you mean?
On GIS, yeah, excuse me.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a motion to accept the recommendations from the CIP Committee as presented.
Sorry, Selectman Muska will move to approve the recommend, recommendation submitted by CIP.
Is there a second?
Marie De Souza will second.
Any further discussion? Selectman Nordell.
Aye.
Selectman Baker.
Aye.
Selectman Muska.
Aye.
Selectman De Souza.
Aye.
Okay. Next, is a little something I cooked up. I have a three-slide PowerPoint to share. So we're coming up on year end. Go. And one of the things that we're looking at is, is where our budget stands, and we actually are in a strong position in terms of our budgeted funds versus how much has been expended. So this is where we stand. We have an estimated, we're estimating returning a little more than a million dollars to the fund balance. I have put together a wish list that I'm gonna send to the Board of Finance for projects that could have a public benefit that I'd asked them to consider transferring funding for, and that, that's in the amount of four ninety-five, one forty. And then, so we would still be turning back five hundred and seventy-four thousand, four eighty-two to the fund balance. So this is the, I looked up the general statutes, and this is wholly and completely within the purview of the Board of Finance. It's CGS seven dash three forty-seven. But I wanted to share with you guys ahead of time what my ask of them is going to be. So first and foremost, we all know that we need to get serious about studying the radio replacement. We've done the RFP. The next step was going to be to ask for an added appropriation for the funding for that. Rather than asking for the added appropriation, I'm, I'm gonna ask if that be transferred into a CNR account so we can draw from it. It's the same process. It's the same money. It's just an available step that, that is in front of us. The police department also has a need for two IT programs that will help bring, keep them in compliance with, with the law in terms of felony recordings and nine-one-one recordings. They have some, they have a software program, no, they have, they have hardware that is well-passed, it's useful life, called iRecord. And then they have a software program that they use to report all of their phone calls, their nine-one-one, they're dispatching all of that stuff that they need to keep listening for. We, we have, as you'll recall, included in the budget, turnkey project planning money in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. That will get us a project, probably. I'm gonna ask the Board of Finance to set aside another hundred thousand for a second turnkey project in anticipation, again, that there's gonna be a federal infrastructure bill, or that there's gonna be bonding funding that's available. We also are, and this is a, a couple of these are ripped right off of the CIP list. We have not done any playground improvements in way too long. We have equipment that's approaching the, a degree of dangerous that I want to ask them to consider replacing. Melissa's total request for playground funds is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would be for all parks across town. So to start with that is basically one year of the CIP request, which is seventy thousand, which at least gets her started at one, at one location, so that to Noreen Farmer's point, her granddaughter isn't playing on the same equipment that her daughter did. That also has the, the visible benefit of returning or investing in something that the taxpayers can directly benefit from. The next is, I'm gonna ask for a hundred thousand dollars for municipal property improvements. That could be things like gazebos or outdoor decorations or, you know, things like that to make municipal buildings actually look like municipal buildings instead of buildings that we don't really take care of the way we should, or that we aren't investing in. It's amazing, and, and this is, I'm not saying that this is what we're going to do, but just picture in your mind driving past the police department as it is now, and then picture in your mind driving across the police department with some, some shrubbery and some landscaping so that it actually looks like an enticing place to, to stop in. There's a difference if we invest in ourselves and show that we're taking pride in our, in the way our buildings look. So that's gonna be an ask. The next thing is something that came about from the emergency circumstances that we experienced with the hurricane, not, not just the hurricane last year, but also Tropical Storm Izaias, no, the, the one before that one, the one back in twenty-eleven. Sandy, Tropical Storm Sandy. As well as the, the power outages that incurred, we don't have a facility where we can provide showers for people in the event that there is a sustained power outage in town. There's been talk over time about upgrading or renovating the bathrooms at the high school or the bathrooms at the middle school, but that hasn't come to be. And so what I talked to Chief DiMarco about, and to Joe Sauerhofer about, is an alternative, which would be a portable emergency shower structure with, it would have three eighty-eight compliant shower bays, and wherever a building is that has power could be converted into effectively a full-on emergency shelter, rather than having one place designated that could be impacted by an event as well. Purchasing this mobile unit would instead allow us to turn any municipal facility into an emergency shelter. So if it's a case where Warehouse Point gets pounded, but Broadbrook doesn't, then the Town Hall or the Fire Department becomes the emergency shelter. Visor, conversely, if the, if Broadbrook gets nailed and Warehouse Point doesn't get it as bad, as was the case last year, then we can convert either the high school or the police department into an emergency shelter. So it gives us more adaptability in terms of the circumstances that we're facing. The next thing, we have four servers, two in the Town Hall and two in the Police Department that allow our IT to stay up and running. They're both about seven, or they're all four, about seven years old. Some of them are running on software from two thousand eight, and some are running from software from two thousand thirteen. So what's going to be coming in the, in sooner than later is a need to replace those servers. Because we have a surplus this year, I'm gonna ask them to consider replacing one server each in both of those locations, so that we can, you know, be prepared in case they go down. And the last one is a request from the Police Department for electronic signage that would be also mobile, and it would allow for hazard warnings, you know, if there's it, you know, if they were gonna do a tractor-trailer rollover, rollover on ninety-one, and they were, and East Windsor Police was a responder to it, or the Fire Department was a responder to it. We could actually have signage like DOT has to say there's a hazard ahead, you know, write two lanes closed, or whatever the circumstances would be. So it's an emergency preparedness idea. I have these ranked based on where I think the importance is, as I understand it. Again, I'm gonna submit this to the Board of Finance, but I wanted to share it with you guys ahead of time, and take any feedback that you have as to, you know, if you think I'm in the right order or not. So, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I mean, granted, it's not my decision or, or anything like that, but to me, funding for emergency showers, I'd much rather see the money go to two of the schools for the showers to be fixed at two schools on either side of town. That serves two needs at once. It gives you emergency showers on both sides of town, and it puts showers back into the school system. So to me, that's, as far as I'm concerned, it's a waste of money. Because you're gonna have those things sit with the chance that they may get used once in a two-year period that we actually have such an incident happen, and they're just gonna deteriorate during the course of those two years, and they'll probably deteriorate very fast. And then my input for the signage, the electronic signage, I'd much rather see signage, electronic signage in front of Town Hall, like Warehouse Point Fire has, to inform residents of things going on in town, voting, budgets coming up, things of that nature. If there's an accident on the highway and it's serious enough, DOT will come there with a sign and put it up, and they'll put it up on the overhead signs that you see traveling out of Enfield and down in Windsor. That's my two cents on that.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make note of both of those when I submit my, my inquiry to the BOF. Don't, don't hear about it. Anybody else?
Nobody else has got anything right now. I just wanted to ask a couple of questions about the servers. You mentioned that you were going, you were thinking of replacing one server at each location. Are the servers at each location paired together? Are there, like, is one like a backup server in each location?
My understanding is that there are two redundancies, one in each building, but I'm not a hundred percent sure of that.
Yeah, so you gotta be careful, like, if you, if the two machines at, at Town Hall, let's say, are, you know, backing each other up, basically, one is copying to the other one, or they're, or they're load balancing, or whatever the, the case may be. Try to replace one of those with newer equipment and newer software could cause issues with that replication process. So it might be better just to replace two at a location. And I would be all for actually replacing all of them anyway, because they're, they're well beyond their, their end of life at, at the seven or eight years. I think the last time they were replaced was when I was selectman last time, so that was two thousand.
And, and they were replaced in an emergency circumstance because they went down.
They, yeah, we had, the system beforehand was twenty years old. It was a piece of crap, and obviously, at that point in time, and vulnerable to everything. And that's the problem with these. The two thousand eight servers are certainly vulnerable to a lot of stuff. End of life is soon. So I would, I'd be for replacing all four servers, even if that meant taking money from somewhere else, and you know, I have my places I would choose, but I'll, you know, I'll leave it up to others to decide that, but I think that's a higher priority than maybe some other things. And then my other comment, I'm not sure how, the, the funding, the seventy grand for the playground equipment, I guess I'm okay with that if it's gonna be put away in a, in a, in a fund to, to wait until we have, you know, our big plan, what we're gonna do, complete, rather than spending money now, and I think that if we have anything that's actually dangerous, rather than rush to replace it, we should just remove it.
Yeah, well taken. Quite well taken.
Now, the rest of it, I'm pretty well good with. One thing I haven't seen, though, and, and maybe we'll talk about this to get to, you know, bonding and everything, but you know, the radio system is obviously gonna be a big ask when they finally get to that point. I don't know, like, what the timeline is for that, and if we need to, you know, start thinking about that funding, or, or, you know, in this process, not here, in this, in this trench of, of dollars, but you know, in the bonding discussions coming up.
So what the, I'll give you a thirty-second answer to that very long question. It's, it's a longer discussion, but here's the, the highlights of it. The RFP will, will provide us with a general direction for which way we need to go, and that will determine how we have to go about getting the money. The, the cheapest option by far is going to be to, to convert over to the state system, we think. But that's something that the RFP process will tell us. If that's the case, that's a much lower dollar ask than if we have to replace the whole system and, and basically set up our own thing and replace all of our equipment. That could be easily a seven-figure problem. So we would have to bond that. The other thing that we're still waiting for guidance on, and it is not clear yet, is to whether ARP funding is, is whether that's an appropriate expenditure purpose for ARP funding. So there's still some moving parts on that. Anyway, we go, the first smart thing to do is to bring in a, an independent third party to tell us what we're thinking about. So that could be, that process could be anywhere from, depending on what the results are, anywhere from six months to two years away.
Yeah, I guess I had it wrong, because I thought we were already doing that. I thought there was already a committee working on this, this.
There is. There's a committee, it's, and it's all professional staff that are doing it. We've issued the RFP, we have, we have responses to the RFP, we have the RFP back, we don't have the funding. You know, so the next thing was going to be to come for an added appropriation to fund the, the actual study. Again, we have the opportunity now to just appropriate it and be done.
Got it.
Sarah or Marie?
Yeah, Jay, um, in regards to the funding for the electronic signage, I have a completely different opinion than my fellow selectmen. I think it's much needed, especially after we signed the agreement with the government last meeting, that we would make sure we get the message out for not texting while driving and seatbelt. We could use that electronic signage to make a rotating reminder so that we at least fall under that contractual mandate. So, and I think it's better served at the police station, um, just because I think there's more traffic on that road than, uh, going past the Town Hall. And at some point, I agree, we need one at the Town Hall also. So maybe you can slide that in somewhere else down the road. As far as the portable bathrooms, I have no, no idea, anything about portable bathrooms. I know they exist. I'm not sure, you know, how they handle if not being used. So I think he Charlie made a valid point on that we need to look a little bit more at those portable showers. So I'd like to see a little bit more information on those before I make a decision. But I'll leave that up to Board of Finance.
I have the quote spec, it's four or six pages. That'll be submitted to the Board of Finance next week. I'm gonna, I will also, in the anticipation that I'm not going to be there on Wednesday, I'm gonna prepare a written document for them that, I'm gonna make my arguments and justifications for these, but, but I will incorporate each of yours as well, so that they'll see where, kind of where we're coming from.
Yep. And those will have to all have to meeting anyways, correct?
What's that?
Those all go to a town meeting anyways.
No, they do not.
They're not have to go, okay.
No, they do not. That, and that's what seven-three forty-seven specifically says. It's solely at the discretion of the Board of Finance.
Okay, seven-three forty-seven?
Yep.
Okay. And if it's squeezing the four servers, I've heard a lot of concern that, you know, there's problems with the servers, so if you could do more of those, I think now's the time to do it.
Sarah?
Yes, I do agree with Selectman Nordell as far as the electronic sign. I do think we need to do a better job about voting and things going on in town. I know this past referendum, I didn't see the even the A-frame sign out front saying budget referendum, and I know a lot of people didn't even know there was a vote, and I think that the message that Marie mentioned could also be displayed on a sign there, not just at the police station. And I guess the funding for municipal property improvements, to me, that just seems very vague. I know you mentioned landscaping outside of the PD and such, but could that also mean like an office renovation, or? No, okay, so just. Good.
Well, we don't have, I guess, I suppose it could, but we don't have a need for any, any office improvements at this point, you know, or we just, we just redid Town Hall, so it's COVID compliant. The annex is COVID compliant and is only five years old. We just did, we just redid the Senior Center before it opened. So we, you know, I guess it could, but there's no need for it.
Okay, that was just my concern by seeing, you know, it seemed very vague to me, so I just didn't want us to be spending money where we just spent money, basically. Other than that, I don't have any issues really. I do see Selectman Nordell's point with the portable showers, as far as if we were to do that at the school, it would bring it, you know, up to date, and that could be used as an emergency shelter if needed, if there were power and things there, so I guess I wouldn't really be in favor of that either, and that's it.
Which, which one was that?
The showers.
Just going back one item. We didn't, we, I'm not sure we expended any, but we certainly didn't expend, most, most of the, the costs for renovations at Town Hall was COVID money. So that was CARES Act money. It was not town money. I believe, I believe I'm correct in saying that that's the case.
As far as the redoing the meeting room, that was COVID funds?
And I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that that was CARES Act money.
Okay, and then I know there was also some office renovations too, correct?
Yeah, CARES Act money.
Okay, thanks.
We got, we got like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars for CARES Act money. I think I'd have to double-check with Amy or Joe, but I'm pretty sure that that's what that, that the money that was transferred at the end of last year. I don't believe we used that. I don't, I don't think we used town funds to do that, or at least the majority was not town funds.
Okay, because I do remember, I think, a Board of Finance meeting, there was a transfer for, I wanna say like eighty-seven thousand dollars or something, right before the end of the fiscal year for some renovations in Town Hall, so.
Yep, and that was, that was before the CARES Act passed.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. I'm working on a more grandiose proposal, but I, I don't have it done yet. And all I'm going to do is go into item by item with justifications for each. But I have comments that you've each provided. I'll incorporate them into a narrative and submit that to the Board of Finance ahead of Wednesday. So, public participation. Are there any members of the public who would wish to address the board?
Jason, did you miss item number C, end of year budget status?
That was what we just did.
Oh, that was part of that. I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something.
Seeing none? Any other business to come before the board? Thank you. A motion's been made to adjourn. Is there a second?
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. It's non-debatable. Selectman Norde.
Aye.
Blackman Baker. Blackman Muska.
Aye.
Blackman D'Souza.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 6:01 PM. Thank you, folks.